I'd like to call for order the December 8th Council Committee of the Whole Meeting. I'm going to be asking you to rise momentarily and during your moment of silence, I'll remember Robert Jones. He is a former Borough manager here in Pottstown, served from June of 1994 until 2003, and he died November 16th this year. So please keep him in your prayers, and we'll follow that with a pledge to the flag. Amen?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Let me start by announcing that at 6:45 this evening, we held an executive session to discuss personnel. No action will be taken from that. First on the agenda was the Executive Director of Pottstown Regional Library, and that we're removing that at this time, so we'll start with number six, the Schuylkill River Greenways, Tim Fenchel.
Thank you.
Hello, thank you for inviting us here. My name is Elaine Schaefer, and I am with Schuylkill River Greenways, and I'm here tonight with Tim Fenchel, who is also with Schuylkill River Greenways, and Noah Phillips, I'm sorry, I blanked on the last name. Noah is, he runs Take It Outdoors Adventures, and that is our sister organization. Now, I'm going to tell you, start with a brief introduction to who we are and why we're in front of you today, for those of you who aren't familiar with us, and for anybody who's watching who's not familiar with us. And then Noah and Tim are going to take you through the details of this proposal. We're very, very excited about this, and we hope you will be too by the end of the evening. So we are a nonprofit organization, a heritage area, and we, our basic mission is to connect people and communities to the river and the Schuylkill River Trail. Our mission is at once environmental and cultural and preservation, but it is also all underscored by economic development. And we look to support and bring economic vitality to the town, the river towns through which the trail runs. And we have been based in Pottstown for almost 20 years, and we have run a, we're right in Riverfront Park, and we're a tenant of the college, and we have run a free bike share out of that location for 15 of those years. We're very excited about this proposal. It is, it comes from a brainchild that we had a few years ago, when we took a look around at the, at our other river towns around the region, the Lehigh Valley, this, the Susquehanna, and we noticed that they all had these burgeoning industries of recreation around their trails and around their river, and that for some reason, that was not happening in, on the Schuylkill River. So we have made a pretty big commitment over the last few years to invest in developing and supporting the recreation industry around the Schuylkill River. And our vision is to have a hub system of places where you can go rent a bike or a kayak in several different places along the river, and that you could interact with all of this, you know, pick it up in one place, drop it off in another. The, the core of this system, we would like to see in Pottstown, where our headquarters is. And we have started with this partnership with Take It Outdoors. I'm going to leave it at that and give it over to the detail team, and I really look forward to your consideration of this.
Great, thank you for having us. As Elaine said, my name's Tim Fenchel, I'm on the staff of the Schuylkill River Greenways, and I'll just work through this proposal that we have for you through this PowerPoint, and be happy to take any questions at the end of it, so go ahead, Justin. Elaine already discussed the mission of the Schuylkill River Greenways, you can go for one more. So there's a history of partnerships between not only our organization and Take It Outdoors, but also, or our organization and the Borough, and also the Borough and Take It Outdoors. So for over a decade, we have been working with an outfitter, it was a for-profit outfitter called Take It Outdoors, and they supported many of our events. Each year, we have a sojourn, which many of you probably have heard of, it stops here in Pottstown for a night. We have a bike ride in partnership with Slidebox here in town that works out of Riverfront Park. We have pedal and paddles that introduce people to the river and to the trail. And we have a need for an outfitter to support that, for guides, for equipment, and all those sorts of things. So we've been partnering with Take It Outdoors for over a decade. The Borough has also partnered with us, obviously, on many of those, those projects as well, and we've also partnered with the Borough on our free bike share program, which started in 2008. The Borough has also partnered with us and Take It Outdoors by opening up the shed that currently exists in Riverfront Park, where we have stored some of our equipment over the years. That really happened in 2018 and 2019, and we even had some pop-up rental weekends during those two years that were very successful. So go ahead, Justin. So then, of course, COVID hit in 2020, and our partner, Take It Outdoors, announced that they were going to be closing their doors. And so we were in a bit of a jam, and we came up with, we knew of a model that existed over in the Pine Lands of New Jersey, where a nonprofit had a, also a nonprofit partner that was an outfitter. So basically, what we did is we, we created a limited liability corporation, T O L L C, and they purchased the existing equipment in the business that was the previous for-profit business. So Take It Outdoors now is a nonprofit 501(c)(3) that functions as a sister organization of the Schuylkill River Greenways. Take It Outdoors reports to our Board of Directors, just like we report to our Board of Directors. So that's sort of the model that exists now, and we kicked this off in May of 2020 last year, sort of not knowing whether COVID was going to be a good or bad thing for, for recreational outfitter. And obviously, it turns out, we can sort of look back over the last 18 months and see how much people have really valued recreation, both on bikes, walking on trails, and getting out on the river, so we've had a fantastic turnout the last year and a half. You can go ahead, Justin. So since May of 2020, we have operated out of a riverside location just across the river in North Coventry Township, there's a building adjacent to the Quake Club there, that, right next to the river access, and we've been operating out of that. We've done rentals there, we've done the bike share program out of that location, we've had educational programming for youth and for families, we've taught introduction to kayaking classes, done CPR training, lots of things like that that have to do with outdoor recreation. And over those first 18 months, we've actually had closer to 3,000 people in the, either residents of the community or visitors come to the community to partake in the programming that Take It Outdoors has offered. So we've been sort of overwhelmed by the success of this in the first 18 months, it's been a really fantastic success. So our proposal is, at this point, to you, we would like to consider moving Take It Outdoors from the location of North Coventry across the river and to operate out of Riverfront Park in Pottstown. I know you all have seen this, this information before, and we will get into the specifics of it, but there are, there are a lot of benefits to reasons that we think this is a good, a good choice and a good op, a good option for us. We would need to complete some minor site work, we would be looking at bringing in a couple shipping containers and setting them in the upper end of the park. We have looked at locations with, with Mike Lenhart and discussed that, the, the containers would be anchored, we would provide services for all of our participants, and we, a lot of this information is in the plans that we have submitted. You can go ahead to the next one, Justin. So why are we moving? Why do we want to consider this? One of the big reasons for us is that we're disconnected from the Schuylkill River Trail across the river there. It's very difficult for the bike program and people that want to get out on bikes to cross Annover Street, they have to walk their bikes across the street and then either down College Drive, or even worse, you know, down the steps. And so it'd be a much better connection for people to get directly onto the Schuylkill River Trail in Riverfront Park. There'd be a lot, a lot better, a lot more opportunities for people to use the biking portion of what we do from the Riverfront Park location. Of course, there'd be a wonderfully stronger connection to the downtown community, Noah can attest to this, as he's working on Thursdays and Fridays and Saturday nights, people are, say, come in on their kayaks or on their bikes at 4:30 or 5 o'clock in the evening, and they say, can you recommend a spot for us to go to eat? And they, of course, are looking, and we recommend the places that are, that exist in Pottstown. And it's going to, we really envision this as a community asset. It's a nonprofit, a lot of what we do is serving youth groups, church groups, we've done a lot of work with Boy Scout and Girl Scout groups, so there's a, having a visible presence in the community of Pottstown is not only going to strengthen what we're hoping to serve and the mission of the Schuylkill River Greenways, but it's also going to benefit the community. And like I said, we're going to also strengthen community connections through recreational interest, and there'd be a real energy, we believe, that, you know, right now, over in North Coventry, our location over there, we even see it when, you know, your folks show up and they're interested and they're excited about what they're doing and the recreation that they're about to take place in. Bringing that kind of energy and positivity to the community of Pottstown and to Riverfront Park would be a real asset. I can tell you that every year during the sojourn, when we have several hundred people come to Riverfront Park for the sojourn, they're always blown away by the beauty of Riverfront Park and the asset that it is, and so we think this, this would just sort of enhance that asset that already exists. So this is a site plan that we have had an engineer work with us on. You can see, we're looking at potentially two 40-foot containers that would house the kayaks and the bikes and the kayaking equipment, and one 20-foot container that would sort of act as like the office space or the check-in and registration for participants. And then you can see on the upper right of this graphic, you can sort of see what we might envision that container to look like to welcome people to the outfitter. There, there will be a more detailed site plan, this one was done a little bit more colorfully, so you can see what it might look like. We would have our own porta-john that would be housed within a gated section of the containers that we would service on a weekly basis, that that would be locked in every night within the gates and the fencing of the, the shipping containers there. Go ahead, Justin. This is just a little bit more of a close-up there on what that would look like. We would have to level the area just a little bit, it already is fairly level, we would have to bring in a little bit of stone to set the shipping containers on, and when we would enter, obviously, if this would be, to be approved, we'd enter into an agreement with the Borough, and we would be willing to upkeep that area with a mulched area that would look presentable to participants and to visitors to the Bureau, to the Borough and to Riverfront Park. You can go ahead, Justin. And again, that's just sort of the mock-up of what our shipping container might look like. Go ahead. I know there are some other businesses in the Borough that have used shipping containers in really, really neat and creative ways, and there are some really great ways that you can do that. You can see, this is a, a program in a city somewhere in the U.S. that they use the doors to have great maps of the, the community where they could bike, and they operate it out of the shipping container. Go ahead, Justin. You know, these are just some examples of, of how shipping containers can be used. Go ahead again, Justin. Just an idea of how some similar partnerships exist that are similar to what we're proposing, Valley Forge National Park, of course, has a bike rental in their lower parking lot to allow people to access the park itself through biking. Go ahead. There is an outfitter down in Assateague National Seashore that is a bike and kayak rental as well. They do guiding, guided youth trips, guided family trips on the waterways down there, and they operate out of a, of a much similar proposal that we're putting out there. Go ahead, Justin. And then there's a bike share in Austin, very similar kind of setup. These are just three that, one, of course, local, and a couple others, these, these are happening all over the place, so just a couple examples to bring to your attention. Go ahead, Justin. So our timeline would be that our current lease over in North Coventry runs through May, but we would like to be set up and able to run at the beginning of the recreation season, which really kicks off in April, so I think our goal would be to ready to open our doors by April 15th. The benefits of the community, I think one of, some of the things we've talked about is we would love to offer a couple days every summer, where there would be free days, free community days to Pottstown residents, where they could come and get a bike, where they could come and get on a kayak at no charge to Pottstown residents, that'd be a really great thing to do. We've done something similar to that already this past year, one of our staff members planned a community days event in the park, they had vendors and artists and craftsmen there, and there was kayaking made available that day. We would envision a couple days like that each summer. Of course, it'd be fantastic benefits to the downtown restaurant and shopping community. Take It Outdoors already does work with a lot of the local school districts, they've done some work with Potts Grove, where Potts Grove students have come and they've paddled the river and done a river cleanup, littered and trash cleanup along the river, so we continue, would love to continue to work with community groups. And then, of course, you know, really think that this would really be a real benefit to the bike share program, which has been in place since 2008. We really could reconnect people to the trail in a much, much easier, much more direct way. Go ahead, Justin. So I, I did a lot of talking, Noah, do you have anything that you would like to add? So we're happy to answer any questions at this point. In the materials that I submitted, there is the engineer drawing a site plan that has information on the proposed anchoring of the, of the containers and the layout that you can take a look at when you get the chance. Yes?
I think this is a fabulous idea, and I think it should have been done years ago, so I'm thankful that you have come with this proposal, and hopefully Council approves. Do you have any thoughts on having another, I guess, container or storage unit for, like, rental space for people to house their own, like, equipment, kayaks and whatnot?
Those, those, there, there are some places that do use that model, I don't know that we have gotten that far thinking about that at this point. They do make kayak lockers for people, and that would be a great option because, you know, you get the equipment, it's hard to, to move it from spot to spot with your vehicle, and so that could be definitely a service that we could consider implementing at some point. Noah probably has more experience in sort of thinking through those things, I don't know, if you have anything to add on that.
We've been approached by it multiple times from local residents, and I think what more people have asked us for is kind of like a season pass, where they have their own boats, but they just want to be shuttled there, and they want to go upriver, and so they'll come every weekend and pay the $10 to do it, but we would, we have, we have a special rate for Pottstown residents and people who want to do that on a regular basis, where they just pay a flat fee, and all summer they get the free shuttle throughout the whole time. I think that's what most people seem to want.
That'd be great, because, you know, if you buy a kayak, you have to buy a new car and, you know, get a new house to put kayak in, it's too much.
I was one of those people that approached you about kayak storage, because I have no room for a kayak. I've actually come and rented kayaks from you a bunch of times, because I can't have one. I did not know, I'm embarrassed to say this, about your bike share, because that's another thing, I have no place to put a bike, so if you're going to let me rent a bike, I'm going to come.
Yeah, the bike share has, has suffered a little bit from COVID, a little bit, you know, we have the, the location at Manitani Green, and we've got to get that back up and running post-COVID. The one that, we have bikes at our office, we've sort of slowly got that back up and running, but it's really tough to do it from across the river when you don't have a direct access to the trail. It's much, much more easier, less intimidating for people to get on bikes when the trail is right where you're, where you're getting the bike from. So I think that this will sort of breathe some life back into the bike share program.
And being able to get a kayak is beautiful. You took us up to where we needed to be, and we kayaked back down, and it was wonderful.
I also want to remind everyone that the Schuylkill River Trail is, the gap between Parkerford and Pottstown will be filled, that will be connected within a year.
Oh, that's nice.
So four, four miles of it will be finished within months, and then that last mile from the 422 Bridge to Industrial Boulevard is almost there, it's a little bit behind, six months behind, but once that happens, the trail traffic and the desire to, to go town to town is really going to skyrocket. So having something like this set up and ready for that
Yep.
will be a great advantage.
Mm-hmm. And if none of you have gone out to kayak before, I, I'm super uncoordinated, and I did it when they were out a couple months ago, it was wonderful, thank you for coming out, so everyone had so much fun, it's very relaxing, you should try it.
No, I, I want a kayak, it's me, me in that boat, it's me in that boat, I just, I don't know, I'm gonna try, I'm gonna try it.
You'll be okay.
I agree with the man, this is a wonderful idea.
Thank you for bringing that up.
And they'll explain stuff to you, they'll tell you what to do.
We're all about the kayak, sorry.
Okay.
Yeah, the shipping containers are really neat kind of design, we have them in our, one of our beer gardens, and I'm happy with how it looks, and instead of IPAs, you guys will be dealing in recreation, so.
I was really surprised to see the unique ways you use them. When I first read that about the shipping containers, I was like, oh, they're going to look terrible, but then I saw some of the pictures and the ideas, and I was surprised.
I assume Mr. Lenhart agrees?
I had very similar thoughts of getting shipping containers to seem appealing, but when the examples were shown of how they're used in other parks, especially the national parks, I came to agree that there's potential there as long as they're continuously maintained, which we discussed at the outset, and yeah, I'm, I'm in agreement that this, you know, this can be a good thing for Pottstown. It also fits with some plans that go back to a study PSU did, I think in 2008, and actually indicates a desire in that plan for recreation for a kayak share at that location. Theirs was a little more grand and perhaps a little silly looking in retrospect, this is a lot more pragmatic, and the location will be suitable as well, it's primarily out of the heavier flood area, it's not going to interfere with any vegetation that's already there, so.
So what I would suggest, if Council is willing to move forward with this, with this idea, is that they could authorize staff to work with SRGA through the, through the upcoming months to refine the plan and identify what kind of approvals might, might be needed, and then you might have to come back here again if, if, you know, to present again, if there are any approvals needed.
Okay.
But I, I don't know, that, that was my thought on the next action.
Definitely.
That way, you know that you've got the support and, and you can keep moving forward with it.
Fantastic, thank you.
That's it, we're listed for action Monday evening to set staff, start working on this right away. Reagan, start coming up.
Great, thank you very much for having us.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Under Subcommittee Reports, Counselor Leverden's Infrastructure.
Oh, the reports in the packet.
That one, Economic Development, this is Lee Clark.
So the lead economic development entity is very much in favor of this too, because anything we can bring back across the river to get people here, we're very supportive of. And Santa had a wonderful arrival on the banks of Riverfront Park on Saturday, so it was, it was a very joyous occasion. He was transported by dragon boat, so we want to thank the dragon boat folks, and we also want to thank the chief, Chief Hand, and his colleagues for getting Santa safely to the alley on a fire truck. So we had a lot of really good things happen on Saturday, I think it was a lovely day, the weather cooperated, and I just want to remind everybody that Shop Small is more than one day a year, and that it gets promoted as that, but we need to continue to support the businesses that have invested here in the Borough of Pottstown, so please remember that when you're out holiday shopping. So tonight, what I want to do very quickly is, for those of you that are not aware, we are no longer, well, we are in our articles for the corporation, but we are now doing business as Pottstown Area Economic Development, so we changed the "I" to the "E", and I wanted you to be able to see the new website very briefly, it's redesigned, we think it's easy to navigate. I'm told that people that use a device other than a laptop, it's really very friendly, user-friendly, that's how it was designed, and we are, now have one website, rather than having two standalone websites, we really wanted to make sure that we had an integrative experience. I always said that paid's website with an "I" was for utilitarian reasons, it was for the purpose of site selection and people who wanted to know what real estate was really available here for them to locate businesses. And this now is much more interactive, we have the I Pick Pottstown Stories, which was always the feel-good site, to talk about the assets that were here and really kind of cheerlead those success stories. So we have integrated it, we have heard great feedback, we, as a board, decided that economic development is really who we are and what we do now, and it made a lot more sense, so I hope that you will spend some time looking around. We are continuing to put properties up on the website, but we are charging a fee now, we do have to get some revenues, so to be a featured property, there will be a fee, and with that, there's a package that comes along with social media exposure as well. So you can see 343 East High Street is our first featured property, and we hope that more real estate professionals will engage with paid, so that we can work together to make sure that we're getting viable businesses into these spaces. I know that some of the businesses that have already, you know, they came to you for conditional use, or they got some help from landlords, and they're not giving it enough time. If you get into business and you are a retail operation in today, in today's marketplace, you must have an online presence, and you have to be open when you post your hours, that you're going to be open, because people will only come to you once, and when they realize that you have your doors locked and the hours say, I'm going to be here, that's, that's a problem for a new business. So we do continue to try to educate our business community on that. So I did have four slides that I just wanted to show you some of the rebrand quickly, Donna Robins did a great article for us, so please, I hope you will take a chance to look that up in the Mercury, and I am not sure why that's flashing like that. But we also brightened up the colors, there was a lot of blue in our old logo, and I know that that is the Borough colors, but we also wanted to create some vibrancy and give it a modern feel. So that is literally a sign on our office wall now, and an "E" that I spray painted orange, so. Justin, can you? So you see that the old look was very industrial, and we're proud of our industrial past, and we still do have industrial property that does very well here and is desired by a community that needs that type of space, but we also want to encompass more of what we do. So we also, the circular motion of the lines is that it is a cyclical thing in economic development, and that it is integrated. Okay, that's better. Now that we've given everybody a headache, it's so, hopefully you received, each one of you should have received a mailer that looked like this, and that's simply what you're seeing on the screen, which says, new businesses, new investors, new energy, and new brand, and then we also have And then we also have our very hardworking board inside there. And I think that's the next slide, Justin.
Yeah, I see Justin in there.
There's Justin.
I see him.
Justin is our immediate past president. In January 2022, he will once again be the vice president. And Rebecca Swanson will be our leader as the president, the executive director of the Redevelopment Authority. So, there is our, there is our board members minus one. There was one that could not be there that day. But we really wanted to give people, you know, we know that, we all know what paid is and does, hopefully, at this point. But we need to make sure that the greater community knows that we're here as a resource. And I think that's my last slide. So, that's my presentation tonight. Thank you. Again, shop small, everybody.
Thank you.
Transportation. Anything to add? Or it's review, Councilor Prosser? Efficient methods. Councilor LeVedance?
Nothing notable.
The board's emergency services. Chief Hand?
Hello, everyone. I just wanted to give a couple of updates for the borough for the month. Obviously, Santa's coming to town again on September 18th. So, that'll be Saturday. He's going to be starting around noon. And until he finishes, we're going to try to, like we do every year, try to hit every street in the borough. So, keep it, keep your eye out and ears out for the sirens. Real quick, just two quick things to follow up on. We did have our emergency management drill last month. It went pretty well. We haven't had any results yet. Was probably the biggest one. Even the Pima guy came to us and said there was a lot of people in the room. But we wanted to get everyone an idea of what was going on for those drills and refresh the members that were on that committee for a while, but also the newer members. And just to follow up real quick, I know I've had some questions about the fire today. We had on Evans Street, we had a pretty serious fire. The fire was contained to the second floor. But some highlights of that were, not highlights, but some things to be, borough shouldn't be aware of. Our L and I inspector was on the street doing an inspection today and noticed the fire. He was one of the people that called it in. They went up and they figured that everyone was out, that people were kind of telling everyone was out. And our L and I inspector saw that someone was still in there and was able to assist a person out that was really seriously injured and helped him out. On top of that, when he got him out, our police department was the ones that initiated treatment, which was keeping this woman sustained till EMS got there. We were there really quick. But, you know, it was a team effort between our L and I, our EMS, our police, and our fire. At this time, we don't have a whole lot of information on the fire. We know it's accidental. And we don't know, you know, some other things about the patient right now. But I know there were some questions about it. It was fresh today. And then next month, we'll have a whole report for the entire year of the emergency services. All right? So, thank you, everyone.
Very good, thank you. Human Relations. Mrs. Levigan.
Good evening, councilors, council president, and madam mayor. The month of December is full of religious celebrations, Hanukkah, Christmas, and Hanza. And the Commission's December meeting is scheduled to be held on Tuesday, December 14th, 2021, at 6:00 PM in council chambers. And all are welcome to attend. And the Commission wishes a joyous holiday season to all.
Very good. Land Bank. Peggy, is that you? Anything?
So, the Land Bank at its last meeting did select a solicitor to, to help the Land Bank. So, we are, Justin and I have been working on making arrangements to sit and speak with that particular individual or that farm. It is Stephen Bowell. And I am going to mess it up. I want Fitzpatrick. There's an L and then Bubba. Sorry.
Lentz.
Lentz, thank you. So, we are going to be working with them. There is a possibility that the Land Bank will have a transaction coming up, which we're looking forward to, getting that first transaction done. But there's no meeting this month. So, we won't have anything to report to you until the end of January after they meet. So, it'll be the February meeting. But hopefully, we'll have some things moving forward that will be really the first of many transactions that we look forward to in getting properties back into productive use.
Great. Thank you. Okay. Library, Mrs. Hilton.
Hello.
Hello.
Yes, I'm here and I'm going to speak to you about a few things. First is our staff person and passport manager, Erin McNichol. I spilled a Christmas tree out of discarded books painted green. And it's decorated with origami from a patron that's very talented in origami. And it's really neat. You must come and see it just for its own sake. But then we're also hoping that you will help to make it a fundraiser. And for a minimum donation of $10, you can get your name laminated or a message or your business put on a book spine so that whenever anyone comes in the library and sees the tree, they see your little message. My husband and I put on Happy Holidays, the Hiltons, $10 or more. That's the minimum. Also, our brass plaques are another way for you to buy a gift that you won't get anywhere else. And it will honor a person or a group with their name engraved on a permanent display in the library. The friends at the library have purchased a plaque to honor our book sales organizer, Sherry Mikowski. And it also honors our book sale muscle, Bob Mikowski. And our director, Holly Chang, has bought a plaque to honor Clara Haas, one of our former members of the library staff, who was there for 57 years. So, their plaques will be added to the bookshelf as soon as we get them both engraved. Signs announcing our plans to close off the Washington Street entrance exit to the library are missing. It probably blew away in our last storm. But that doesn't mean we've changed our minds. Your absence does not mean that we're not going ahead with this plan. But it does mean we are delayed since the signs said December 1st and we are not quite ready to block it off. But hopefully, that will come soon. And finally, at the Booknok, our little store in the library, there's lots of Christmas books for sale for a dollar. And there are two Christmas baskets being raffled for a dollar a ticket with the winner announced December the 18th. And I'd like to thank our staff member, Amishella Lanker, for donating the baskets. They are beautiful. If you win them, you'll be thrilled. So, Happy Holidays from Pottstown Regional Public Library.
Thank you. Okay, Rick at Center. We do have a report. Councilor Kirkling with us?
No.
No. Anyone have anything else to add?
We did have Jocelyn is on, but we did have our, our meeting, our board meeting today. And if Jocelyn can just chime in on the needs for, she needs some assistance there. So, she's going to put out a post to have another teacher or some help. Jocelyn, you tell them what you need. Yeah? Jocelyn?
You're on mute. She stepped away.
She could have. But, so she's going to post it on, on Facebook, what she, what she needs. And if, if we could, we could share it so she can get some help in there. Yeah. So, but everything else is in the packet.
Very good. And while we have you, how about the Pottstown School District?
Okay. So, for the school, let me just give you a little update here going on. On the 24th of November, the middle school conducted a school-wide search in the morning. And it was a credible threat. So, with cooperation from police, from, from the police and safety protocols, the students were searched and entered the building. And they went back to school and all activities were resumed. Pottstown School, Middle School is also hiring. So, if you are looking for a career with the school, you go to www.pottstownschools.org/employmentopportunities.aspx. So, of course, you know, we have new board members and re-elected board members. So, after the election, we have new board members. So, outgoing members is Benita Barnhill, Amy Francis, and Ray Ross. And I'd like to thank you personally for your services on the school board. Also, took oath with Judge Scott Palladino. Am I saying his last name right? Okay, thank you. The newly elected members was Deb, Deborah Spencer, Phoebe. I'm going to mess her last name up. It's K-A-N-C-I-A-N-I-C.
Kancianic.
Kancianic, thank you. And Kirk Heidel, along with re-elected member, John Armata. New student representative to the board is Mark Ellis, Ellison III, and Tyler Hall also took the oath. And Katrina Bearden is elected president of the board. And I was told, I seen a post on NAACP, that she was the first African-American to become the school board president. So, cheers to you, Katrina. And Stephen Klein is the vice president and Laura Johnson is treasurer. So, I don't know who the liaison is, but I'll keep you posted for the school board for the borough. And as a way of supporting Pottstown families in need of a little holiday help and cheer with this holiday, Higher Ground Church, 1126 South Street, Pottstown will be having a Christmas extravaganza celebration and toy giveaway on Sunday, December 19th. That was on the, also. So, if you, there's, if you want to know anything about what's going on at the school, please go onto their website and also check their Facebook page. I'm done.
Very good. Mayor Hendrick, your report.
Yes. I hope everyone had a nice Thanksgiving. I don't know about you, but I'm especially grateful this year for family and friends and my Pottstown family. And most importantly, this safe and welcoming community that we live in. I'd like to thank the Pottstown Police Department. You have made me feel extremely safe. Every time I have left the house, I see patrol on foot and in vehicles and engaging with the community. And it's really great to see everyone out and about. And speaking of the Pottstown Police Department, if you or your business would like to sponsor a cop card program, please email me for details. We are running out of cards and we'll need to reprint soon. As Peggy Lee Clark, if you didn't stated and if you didn't join us in the festivities last Saturday, it was wonderful with Santa and the tree lighting. I mean, if you can see the tree out there, it's absolutely gorgeous. I think it's the largest tree we've had ever, at least since I've been a resident of Pottstown. Cookie decorating at Beverly's and carolers. It was absolutely wonderful. We also had our breakfast meeting today at Steel River. And Representative Jo, Joey, Joe Cerisi, sorry. He came out as Scrooge. If you have not seen A Christmas Carol with Joe Cerisi playing Scrooge, please go out and treat yourself. Tickets are still available to the 19th. It's like a Broadway production. I mean, it's probably one of the best Christmas Carol productions I have ever seen. So, get your tickets. We also had this evening our ribbon cutting for the Fairfield Inn and Suites in Pottstown. Congratulations to the owner and manager, Mayor Chatra. It is an absolutely beautiful hotel, beautiful rooms, fitness center, complimentary hot breakfast, odd affordable price. If you are in the doghouse that night, you can just go for a staycation. They have a meeting room. You can run out. It's really, really nice. So, I'm excited because now when family comes to visit, we can tell them they have a place to stay now. I'd also like to thank the Pennsylvania Horticultural Society, PCA, and the Pennsylvania Tree Tenders and Valley Forge Girls Basketball Team. They came out and planted, I believe, about 15 trees in Riverfront Park. It was very interesting to learn about like the depth and what all goes into planting a small tree and making sure that it's sustained and watered and makes it to be our big trees in, in our parks. So, thank you very much. Oh, yes. I also had my, the opportunity to exercise my civic duty in participating in the judicial recount for Montgomery County. That is the first time I have done that. I represented Judge Lori Dumas. And it was a very interesting procedure. It is amazing what all goes into that and how many people are needed to recount ballots in Montgomery County alone and the cost involved. And so, I just want to say thanks to all the volunteers and thanks to both parties. Everyone worked really great together and got the job done. I also attended the first time, for the first time, at Sly Fox. There was, it's called Cross Treks. It's basically like a mountain bike race and obstacle for adults and kids. Trinita, I don't recommend that either of you or me try this. I feel like we would get injured. But it was very, pretty awesome to see kids and adults going up and down on their mountain bikes through like treacherous terrain. Coming up on Saturday at Sunnybrook, we have the Pack Children's Christmas Party. Also, on January 1st at 9:30 AM, I would like everyone to sober up, bring your tutu, and meet me at Riverfront Park to properly ring in the new year and jump in the river with me. I know that everyone sitting behind these microphones will be in attendance, correct? And I hope everyone out there will be in attendance as well. The last time I did this was '19. And I tried to like wash off the old year and ring in 2020. It didn't work out so well. You know, I rang in the pandemic. So, let's try to wash off these last few years and go into 2022 refreshed. And wish everyone a happy holidays. I would also like to thank my secret Santa who gave this to me today. This is a Pottstown puzzle that was sponsored, I guess, by Pottstown Rotary before I was old enough to join Rotary in 1990. And it's very cool. You'll see there's Mrs. Smith's pies on here. Chuck's Old Firm, which is, which is it?
Rarier Cropper, Albacarriba, right there, King Street.
King Street, there we go. And we've got Canning's Drugstore and Warwick's Jewelers. It's just very cool to see what Pottstown was like in 1990 and 30 years later, what we've become today. So, I figured we'll put it together and frame it. Thank you. That concludes my report.
Thank you. How about the managers' report? Mr. Keller?
Yes, thank you. Good evening, everyone. Just a couple of updates on PICO and their work in town. Unfortunately, they were able to pave between Manitani and Charlotte Street, but it doesn't look like the weather is going to allow them to pave any further. So, the paving for the rest of High Street will have to wait until, until the spring when the weather temperatures warm up so that asphalt can be put back down. We're also working with PICO for two lights that are not functioning on the 400 block of High Street. They were out there, I know, today and yesterday trying to resolve that issue. When they ran the new electrical power, they did not run power to those two lights. So, they're working on fixing those and getting those lights back, back up and, and running. Another update is that Chief Hand and I have been, we've conducted one meeting with the fire chiefs and the presidents of each company. Um, to try to find ways that, uh, we can be more efficient as an organization and, um, save the, save the fire companies' money in the long term. So, uh, we're just very, uh, early in the process at this point. Uh, the idea is really to make this a, um, a, a, a plan for the future that is really driven by the fire companies. And, um, we were, uh, also got their, uh, nod of approval to, uh, go ahead and bring in a consultant to help us through, um, finding, um, ways that we can work together more, more effectively and more efficiently. And at the end of the day, the goal is to save the taxpayer money. Um, so we'll keep you updated on the outcomes of those. And then I am happy to report that we are now ready, uh, to go out to bid, uh, for the stormwater arch repair at forty-two Walnut Street and thirty-eight Walnut Street. So we have a tentative date right now of an arch bid opening on February, uh, fourteenth. So assume that, assuming that everything's in order there, we would be able to bring that to council for approval at their, uh, February meeting. Um, and then they could go into construction shortly thereafter that. Also, opening on the fourteenth will be the Riverfront Park Streambank Stabilization, uh, work that is needed there due to the erosion underneath the pedestrian bridge for the School River Trail. And, um, we've also submitted a, a grant to the E P A for brownfield cleanup of Pollock Park for about three hundred seventeen thousand. Um, so this will be used to remediate the contaminated soil so that we can return it to daily, uh, operation. Um, and then unfortunately also, we, we, uh, had several grants in for the pedestrian bridge in, in Memorial Park. Uh, we did not receive the grant from, uh, the C F A Greenways Trails and Recreation Program, uh, for two hundred and, and fifty thousand. However, we did secure two hundred thousand from Montgomery County and we still have a pending application with D C and R for a hundred twenty-five thousand. So we, we are steadily building, uh, the funds necessary to get that bridge, uh, replaced as well. Um, and then lastly, uh, we've reviewed the preliminary plans, um, for Sunstrom Field. That was another grant that, uh, that we got through, um, Representative Hennessy and Senator Mensch. And, um, we'll be hopefully in a position to get those, um, out, out to bid here in, in the next couple of days and, um, potentially, you know, bring that in for council approval next month. So, um, we've, we've got a lot of irons in the, in the fire here as far as projects that, uh, are underway.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, tell us about SEP one, Sustainable Energy.
Yes, so, uh, they did have their, uh, second meeting today with the KEEP Committee, who, um, if you recall, KEEP is actually serving as the, as a planning commission for, for this project. We went through the review letter from the Burrows engineer and, um, they're mainly going to comply with, uh, almost all of the comments in the review letter. Um, there were, there were probably about, um, you know, eight or ten of them that, that they're going to need waivers on. And then there was one item that we just need to have further discussion on. Um, but the KEEP Committee did approve that plan for preliminary and final approval. So now they'll be working with staff and our solicitor, uh, to kind of button down all, all the details with the hope that we will bring it to council for, um, final approval at the January meeting. Um, so all is going well there. If you recall, they did come into council to request a zoning variance for the height of the silos. That was granted by the zoning hearing board as well. So, um, things are moving ahead there with, with that project. And, um, it, we seem to be, you know, pretty much on schedule for the most part.
Great. What, when do they expect to break ground?
I, I, I believe it's going to be in the, in the spring or the summer of twenty twenty-two. Um, that is what, that's what they're, they're aiming for. So I think that our approval process will actually be one of the, one of the shorter approvals, um, as, in total, as part of everything that they need from, you know, the Army Corps, uh, D E P and, and everyone else.
No, I'm sure we can beat all of them. We, we wanted more than the others. Thanks. Uh, let me see, how about a resolution for Redner's Market? Redner's, Mr. Garner, is not in our borough, but.
No, this is, um, related to the, um, proposed Redner's Gas Station at the intersection of Irvine and Charlotte Street. Uh, that signal, uh, is owned by the borough, uh, because of the changes to that property, which include additional access and sidewalk. There will be some changes to the signal and PennDOT is requiring, uh, the borough to pass a resolution to approve their, their new form traffic signal maintenance agreement. Uh, my understanding is that there will be some modification to the southbound center turn lane out at that intersection. And PennDOT is requiring the borough to, uh, update and approve the new traffic signal maintenance agreement. So that's your action for Monday night.
Wonderful. We'll list that. And thirteen, there's another resolution, the PennDOT intergovernmental agreement.
This, this was actually before council, I believe, on two other occasions.
Right.
Um, PennDOT continues to change its forms and terminology that it wishes to do. If you council recalls, this is the closed circuit T V that will be installed by PennDOT and maintained by PennDOT at High Street and Hanover Street and High Street and Arm and Hammer Boulevard. Uh, PennDOT has now decided that the appropriate agreement should be an intergovernmental agreement and your resolution would approve that agreement. I think the prior resolution you approved, uh, actually adopted or executed a memorandum of some understanding and now they want a formal agreement. So it's.
Okay.
No sub, no substantive change, but the process by which we're doing it based on PennDOT request is the intergovernmental agreement.
And we'll list that for Monday evening. Uh, fourteen is a resolution, the appointment of a liaison for Burkeheimer slash local tax collection.
Yes, so, uh, we do have a new finance manager and, um, as a part of his, his duties, uh, he, he does need to enter into the Burkeheimer, um, portal and, and have the credentials to be able to, um, make, make changes, um, in that, in that account. Um, so we are recommending that J, uh, J, J P Brophy, um, be appointed for the, uh, Burkeheimer Liaison.
Very good. So we'll list that one Monday.
Yes.
Uh, fifteen, a sales agreement for seven oh seven Hamilton Street between the borough and our land bank.
Yes, if you recall, this was a property that, uh, the borough, um, came into possession of several years ago. And obviously the borough, you know, isn't in the, in the real estate business. We don't want to, to hold property. Uh, but we now have a mechanism in which, uh, we could, we can transfer this, um, to, uh, the land bank. And then the land bank can find a qualified, um, and reputable, um, buyer for the property to rehab the property. Um, and bring it back into an owner occupied status, also put it back onto the, uh, tax rolls. Um, so at this point, um, we're not, uh, we're still several months out from that. Um, but we would like to authorize our solicitor to work with the land bank solicitor now that they have one in place, um, to look at, uh, a, a sales agreement for, uh, possible disposition of this property to the land bank.
Okay. And I think we should list that as well.
Yes.
Okay. Is there any relief for three forty-four East High Street, Mr. Garth?
Uh, yes, thank you. This is a request for a variance, uh, for the property at three forty-four East High Street. Um, essentially, uh, the current first floor is fully a residential use. The applicant wants to convert a portion of the first floor to a personal service spa. The reason that the variance is needed is because under our ordinance, the non-residential use, which will be the spa, will not occupy more than fifty percent of the first floor. There will still be the residents there, but based on that percentage, they need a variance given the percentage of use. Um, I believe, Ryan, that's your ward. Um, it's council's decision whether to take any action to support it, let it go to the zoning hearing board, or to oppose it.
Yeah, I've spoken to the applicant already and, uh, he's in good standing with us and, you know, he goes, uh, owns the High Street Terminal as well. You know, I think I'll be asking for, um, a vote of support towards the zoning hearing board for this. He also makes a very good pork sandwich, too.
We have an opportunity to bring another business to town.
Yeah, absolutely.
All right, and let's list that for Monday night.
And six replacement trees. We've trimmed eleven thousand trees, which means we've trimmed some trees many times. We've done a lot of sidewalk work and so forth. So what brings me here tonight is, under Pottstown subdivision ordinance, if you have a development and you're required to put in trees, uh, you have the option under some circumstances to make a donation to the borough in lieu of putting in the required trees. So McDonald's has donated ten thousand dollars to the tree fund, McDonald's at Shoemaker Road and Route one hundred. Across Shoemaker Road from McDonald's is a car wash, which put in nine thousand five hundred. And Lords and Ladies put in three thousand dollars as part of its subdivision, which means that the tree fund has twenty-two thousand five hundred dollars. In recent years, we've been removing dead trees and trimming trees. And the process we use is we identify the trees. Uh, we do this work generally, we do the tree trimming and removal in the winter. We send a list to the borough manager of what we're going to do. We get his approval. He approves it, then we send a letter to the property owner if we're removing a tree and say, it's your responsibility to remove this tree, but we're going to do it for you at no cost and obligation to you. Uh, we do have the option of replacing it with a small tree. And if you object, let us know. But nobody objects because they don't want to pay to cut down the tree themselves. So we have identified forty-eight dead trees in Pottstown. Davy Tree Expert Company, which has done a lot of work in Pottstown in the last five years. That's going to be about thirty thousand dollars to remove the dead trees and stumps. And then we've identified about sixty trees that really need to be trimmed. That's twenty-seven thousand. So that's a total of fifty-seven thousand dollars. So we're asking the borough to turn over the twenty-two thousand five hundred dollars to us and then we'll take up the excess, the extra cost, which is going to be thirty-four thousand dollars. And we anticipate doing that January, February, March.
Any questions? Very none, we'll list that for approval for Monday evening.
Thank you.
Trees. Uh, next would have been the Pottstown area signals that is off for this evening. Year-end items, uh. Oh, I'm sorry, I did miss that. Chemical bids, uh, number sixteen. You have them?
Yes, uh, so we do have, uh, three bidders, uh, for the, the chemical bids, uh, J C I Jones, uh, Univar, and Coon Chemical Company. Um, so we'll have a recommendation for you on Monday night.
Fine, and we can list that one. And now the year-end items, uh, A is to adopt a twenty twenty-two budget. Do you or our finance director have anything?
Yeah. I'd, yeah, I'd like to, uh, update with some good news on that.
Good news.
So, uh, we were able to, to, to go back and, and, um, through a combination of an assessment, um, you know, decline that, that didn't decline as, as steep as what we had originally projected, um, and also some pretty favorable, uh, rates on healthcare. We were able to bring the budget increase down to a two point nine, nine seven percent tax increase. Uh, that would be an additional point four zero two, um, mils for a total mileage of thirteen point nine four or five mils and a total budget of sixty-one million, two hundred and eighty-eight thousand, nine hundred and fifty-three dollars. Um, this would result in an average, um, tax bill for a property assessed at a hundred thousand dollars of forty dollars and sixteen cents.
And last month it was fifty-five dollars.
Uh, I believe so, yeah.
Okay.
Um, so again, uh, our healthcare came in at a, uh, point, uh, six, uh, increase in total. Um, and then again, we did, uh, we did lose about a million dollars in, in assessed value. However, we, we had projected that we would lose more than that. Um, however, what did come online was in addition to a couple of other smaller properties, but one of the bigger ones that came online was about eight hundred thousand dollars as a part of the Hanover or the Cherry Street Lofts, um, which was a project that the council approved several years ago. So that added, um, about eight hundred thousand dollars to our assessed value.
Okay. Any questions? Very good. Oh, yeah, they, I'm sure they worked hard to bring it down like that. Okay, and we'll list that for approval. Uh, adopting ordinance to fix the tax rates. So if you're favorable with the budget, uh, we'll be adopting the, uh, the tax rate Monday evening.
And we'll send out a revised budget, um, after this, after this meeting, just to show you what all the final numbers are before you vote on it on Monday.
Okay, then, uh, the twenty twenty-two council meeting schedule, that's, uh, that was sent to us. Any questions on that? All right, we'll list that for approval. And upcoming board vacancies, as listed here, the Blighted Property Review Committee, four one-year terms. And can I assume, Ryan, everyone wants to be reappointed? Okay. Uh, construction code, Board of Appeals, we need one alternate. Have any applications yet?
No.
Uh, yep. Planning Commission, uh, one four-year term. I'm assuming Jim Dur wants reappointment.
That's February.
That's not till February. Uh, Pottstown Board Authority, one five-year term, and I know Jeff Chumnuck wants to be reappointed there. E is the vacancy board, one one-year term, also Jim Dur. And F is zoning hearing board, one three-year term and an alternate. Now, J Harp wants the three-year term. Do we have an alternative? Not, no alternate yet, so we'll still be looking for that. Very good. Uh, comments from citizens who are present?
At this, at this time, if there's anyone.
Online.
Online or virtual, feel free to unmute yourself, give me your name and address, or send me a chat, um, before the conclusion of a public comment. All right, at this time, it appears that we do not have any public comment.
Very good. So, um, councillors, any comment? Councillor Proskel.
I'd like to thank the Hill, the Hill Kids for, uh, help cleaning up, I think it was a couple of weeks ago. You know, sorry I missed the, uh, the tree lighting. Had a prior engagement, but, uh, wasn't sure if my kids are banned for life after last year's wardrobe malfunction, but the tree looks great.
Let me guess, they want a tree that size at your house? Uh, councillor Banning.
Um, no, I'm just going to talk about Saturday and how wonderful it was. All day was great.
The whole day.
And I went home and fell asleep. So, and I think I bought Beverly's. I don't go in there and I ate it all myself.
Yeah, that's okay.
So I'm ashamed of that. It was delicious. That's all I have.
Councillor Lewandowski.
I really enjoy going downtown now that the businesses are open and are staying open and coming back since COVID, uh, to go into some of the places that we tried to, we tried to go eat. We had a group of people trying to go out to eat Saturday and was it Saturday when was the tree lighting? It was the tree lighting, right?
Because we left.
Because once we left, we tried to find a place to eat. We walked by the Blue Elephant, it was packed. Walked past J J Ratigan's and asked, it was an hour and a half wait. And, um, so we ended up going to the next selection, which was the pub, which is, which was packed when we even moved in, uh, went in there. And, but it's just nice to see the community coming out and patronizing these places and having good times.
Yes, councillor Lindsay.
Okay, yes, I agree with Don. I was with him and we, we walked from one place, it was an hour wait, it was two hour wait, and then we finally found, we was lucky, we found a place at the pub to eat. Um, so at the, at the, I can't remember, this is, oh, at the high school, they're having a holiday music concert. Uh, and at the, uh, with the high school band, I think that's tomorrow, yes, Thursday, December ninth at seven P M. And, uh, Saturday, like Peggy and, and the mayor said, it was so awesome. Let me tell you something, if you want a good crowd to come out, get the kids to sing because that's what happened. I'm telling you, the parents was, parents was out there, video, I couldn't even get in. I was trying to video, the, the parents was out there recording and taking pictures and, and stuff. The kids were amazing. They did a fabulous job and, and whatever school that was, you know, I knew it was a Pottstown school, but I don't know, but it was, they were cute. It was so cute seeing the kids. If you want to have something, have, bring people, have the kids do it. I'm telling you, it was amazing. This weekend also is Pottstown Area Children's Foundation. It starts at 10 o'clock at Sunnybrook. I would like to thank all, everybody who contribute, councillors, mayor, Chuck, his dad, Jenny, Dan, Justin, everybody. And if I, and if I missed you, please do not blame my heart, blame my mind, sorry. Oh, yes, and the DA's office, thank you, Jenny, yes, and the DA's office. Thank you so much, I appreciate it. I posted a picture on Facebook of all the gifts, and I'm still getting more gifts, so, that we gathered. So I thought I'd try to help them out this time, you know, try to help. It was a lot of work. I don't see how they do it. It's, I just was collecting, it was, it was a lot of work trying to meet up people and collect. But anyway, yes, that's it for me. Happy holidays, everybody. Oh, yeah, and I, and I turned 22 yesterday.
Happy birthday.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, 22.
Mayor, anything?
I don't think I have anything to add. It was just, again, nice to see everyone out and about on Saturday. And I will say, it was especially nice to see that there are people that were not, that didn't live in the Borough out, taking pictures and really excited. I talked to like a family that just lives in Santa Toga. They didn't even ever, they never come down to, to the Borough or never come downtown. They had no idea, and they live five minutes down the street. So it was just nice to see people from other communities coming out to celebrate Christmas with us in Pottstown, so, thank you.
Okay. How to follow all that? I, I was out last Saturday, as some of the other councillors have said. And the, the whole day was just packed with thrilling things for everyone to do. And it is nice to see a lot of out-of-borough people coming in to partake of all the entertainment and things that are available here in town. I guess this is the last meeting of the year that's televised, so I do want to wish everyone a happy holiday and a prosperous new year. And I can't forget thanking our staff for all they do this past year. You heard about the reduction in the, the tax increase? So thank you, Justin. Thank you to the Finance Department. Our director's doing a phenomenal job. And that's about it for this evening. Meeting adjourned.